Okay, good evening. The planning board meeting for Tuesday, October 18th will come to order. All items on the agenda will be heard, so let's do our bond release quickly.
The Land District Department issued for 140 Academy Road on August 2nd, 2011, to allow the construction of five single-family residences. As part of the decision, the planning board conditioned a $10,000 slope stabilization bond. The $10,000 performance bond was released in November 12th of 2014. In order to release the bond, it was required that the applicant needed to wait three years from the date of completion of the slope construction and that the environmental monitor must certify that the slopes and associated retaining walls have been constructed in accordance with the approved plan, and that has all been completed, and a copy of the as-built and that letter from the environmental monitor was in your packets.
Yes, so the houses aren't on the stuff?
They're not on Academy Road, they're on the other side.
Stephen Street.
Yeah, so everything, it's all in order?
Yes.
Okay, because I remember when we did that, where we were really concerned because it was on a slope, and so you're absolutely sure that there's no issues, no weeping, no... Okay. So, and do we have a, did you say we have a letter from?
Yep, the environmental monitor.
Okay.
Has certified a letter, and it's been three years since completion.
Okay. Somebody want to make a motion to release the remaining bond for this project?
So moved.
Okay, how about a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
So, we'll process that and receive the talk.
Thanks.
Okay.
So now we're on to 1210 Osgood Street, and so Rebecca, can you tee us up where we are and what remains to be discussed?
Yes, the stormwater review is pending soil testing results. The civil review comments have been submitted, and we are awaiting responses from those, to those comments. We established a DPWS grow fund for the pump station review. We received notice of a neighborhood petition, a copy was included in your packets for review. And then later today, we received an updated landscaping plan, which is what you see on the easel, and I can display on the screen a little later. And then essentially, at the last meeting, the biggest concern was the height waiver memo, and we didn't get a chance to discuss that, and I'm not sure if Jeff Brown would be here to walk you through that memo and address any concerns you might have.
Okay, good. So here are the list of items we want to cover today, they are, we'll look at the new landscaping, we'll go over the height memo. Do we want to talk briefly about where we stand on the civil engineering?
Jeff Brown is going to give...
Any impact?
Joe Pesnola will give an update on the snow, the stormwater review, and the response to the civil review as well. And at the conclusion, Jeff's going to speak to timing with filing with conservation and...
Okay, good. I think we should have that discussion, so, okay, good.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Joe Pesnola from Hancock Associates. Just to update you on the status of the civil engineering review. As I said last time, that we had met with Lisa Eggleston, and one of the issues that had come up, one of the main issues for her was, what is the site today to establish the pre-development conditions to then be able to analyze the post-development conditions and say that they're equal? She thought that some of the old mapping that we usually use was inconsistent with what we were finding in the field, and she speculated it was because the site had been so highly disturbed back in 2003. So she called for some soil samples to be taken and sent out for analysis. We're experiencing a delay in those, getting those results back. We got nine of the test results back today, but for some reason, the other nine didn't come in, and the other nine were the ones we actually needed to do the superficial characterization. We got the nine on the subsurface. So we're hoping that we get those balance of the tests tomorrow and can complete the information that she wants to see and put that to bed. But I think that's really the last issue with regards to wrapping up the peer review portions of that. We're all set with the TEC review comments. We just need to submit whatever comes out of this soil testing in one package of revised plans and calculations and information to TEC and Lisa, and that should wrap that. So, the...
Just before we go on.
The review comments kind of, the soil testing is really continuing, you know, once they get that and those assumptions of different soil types are confirmed, then it makes sense that TEC, a lot of their comments are plan-related as well, so if there's going to be adjustments to plans, we might as well send one whole set at once. The quantity comments is fairly high, but I believe surmountable on the civil side, it's just, we just need the responses.
For the record, the nine tests that did come back did confirm my assumptions, so we're on the right track. So, when we last met, there was a call for whether we could develop some additional landscaping along the main drag between the commercial and the residential buildings B and C. We looked at that, and essentially what we did is we picked up buildings B and C and the parking lot behind them, which again is the main residential entrance, and we moved that whole block, five feet, to the west. What that allowed us to do was to develop a landscape, a five-foot landscape strip between the proposed sidewalk that will about the parking and the residential building. In the areas where we have retaining walls, which is to the north end of both buildings B and C, that five feet will be between the sidewalk and the retaining wall. So it will allow us to establish some vegetation in there, some hedgerows, some different kinds of shrub material that will give some mid-level vertical green to the parking lot, but also shield the windows of the residents in those areas. So what we're presenting here is Chris Huntress's enhanced landscaping in that area between the two. And what Chris has done here is, just to accent what we've been saying from the very start, is kind of the main theme of connectivity between the commercial and the residence, which is this pedestrian spine, and he's trying to accent, that's where our attention is, that's where really the focus is. And from that, we've got these additional landscaping features done there within that five feet. So as we move from the south end of building B, he's got some additional shrubbery, and in that area, he's got a five-foot lawn area. So he's taking the opportunity where the grades are the same from the parking lot to the building and establishing the shrub line a little bit further back to give some lawn area. But then, once we hit the area where there's a retaining wall, he stops the lawn and brings the shrub line to the east side of the wall, and then brings that up. The grades are a little bit different on building C, so he's maintaining that shrub line, kind of in a linear form, all the way up that. So we've got, again, parking lot sidewalk, and then the shrub line on building C, because that retaining wall is a little bit longer, brings, comes down into the site a little bit more. So that's what we did. We didn't reduce the landscaping on the west side of the building at all, again, by picking up the whole parking lot back there and moving it west. Took advantage of kind of that strange triangular shape to it, so it really didn't reduce a whole lot of landscape between that parking lot and the ring road, and we didn't lose any parking spaces, so we're whole. So that's a summary of what we've done from that standpoint. So we think it's, we think it's a great plan, it gives us the vertical landscaping in the trees, and it gives us that mid-level shrub line and shielding, some additional lawn area, and some buffering or separation to the residential building.
Does it change the number of stairs into the building on the egress side or the retaining wall?
Nope, the relative grades are the same, so...
Good, I thank you for looking into that, because it's one of the things we had talked about last time, and I was glad you were able to accommodate that.
Wouldn't change the appearance of the road either. Remember, by moving it back, it dropped.
No, all the elevations stayed relatively the same, so what we've done is just made the sidewalk plain deeper, so now we have the sidewalk and a landscape strip there.
I think this is the first time around, or last week, but in the middle of the buildings, is that an entrance also, or no? Off of the spine?
No.
Into B and C, those little things that go in?
No, those are not...
Those are not entrances?
No.
And on the Osgood Street side of B and C, are those still just exits rather than both exits and entrances?
Yes.
So I am having a little trouble, I'm just a little confused. If the idea is to link the commercial with the residential, it just, I'm having trouble reconciling if, if you can't enter the residences from the commercial side, doesn't that, isn't that in tension? Doesn't that take away from the idea of linking them?
Not at all, I think...
Because you can't come from the commercial into the building on that side.
What we're trying to do is foster, is foster that spine area as the green, as the connection point. And knowing that our, this is not the kind of a residential building in which you have your front entrance and your rear entrance across from each other with the elevator core right there. What we have here is, we have an offset entrance where these two buildings are mirrored, where the entrance is closer to that spine on the main entry side, and that's where our elevator is. So by and large, all the people on the second floor and third floor are going to want to use the elevator, so they're going to want to use that main entrance on the other side. And we don't think that it's that far a distance with these offset entrances to think that they can, they can come around to that entrance. We just, and we do, we want that to be kind of the highlight of the experience is to move in, you know, through that green spine corridor.
So can I say something?
Please.
Because, okay, so the way I see it is that...
Have to ask.
I don't say a lot, because I don't think that necessarily, that the people that are living in those apartments want anyone that's in a restaurant or whatever, after being out or whatever, like just having free, like an entrance that they're entering into that building. I think you want a private entrance if you live there, and you walk just around the building, and then you walk up to the, it's not to create a free flow from one area down to them, it's from the apartment up.
I guess the question, the way I'd ask the question is, what would happen, let's say you put it in that way in the beginning, and your tenants didn't like it, would you just make it both in and out? Is that what you would do?
If we had, if we had to, in the future, Mr. Chairman, we could try and adjust the grades to deal with that, to try and get away from the stairs, or do something along those lines later, put in ramps, or do something along those lines, but really became a problem. But I think Ms. McSherry has really hit on the intent here. We want to have an experience where you're coming through a nicer area, and you're coming into a secure, well-lit area, where you're coming into the lobby and getting into the elevator, unless you live on the first level. If you have those other doors there, we need them for egress, but if you have them for access, and someone holds those things open, and it's open to the commercial area and everything else, it creates a potential safety issue. So we really, somewhat purposely, like the idea of having it be egress only. After the last meeting, we did as a team talk about just this concern, and decided really to keep it the way it is. We like the idea of having it be an egress only on that side. I think Ms. McSherry articulated.
People look down the corridor and it's...
Well, but I mean, I guess my point ends up being is that very little, nothing on the exterior of the building will change. Anything that's within our remit will not change, regardless of whether it's ingress or egress on both ends. If at some point in time, like you said, the market tenants demand it, they'll just trigger the side of the building and fix it for that purpose.
You always have a key card to block random people from going in a door. I mean, I've lived in a million apartment complexes in my day.
But holding the door open, it's late at night, but I don't, I don't think that it, what's going to happen is...
I didn't hear your other comment.
Oh, they're going to use the, I've managed plenty of buildings which had fire doors like this, egress only, and you can't lock stop them from going out of it, because it's an egress, it's an emergency egress, so you alarm it, they're still going to use it. You put up a security door, they're still going to use it. All you can do is find out who used it, but they're still going to use those egress, like guarantee it, I'll bet you a million dollars.
And you find out about it too late, after the fact, because you have them on tape.
So, so the biggest thing is, is to make it as usable as possible, because even the second and third floor, if someone, if there's a stairwell going down to that one, and I live in that corner, I am not going to go down the hallway, out the front, around that way, I'm going to go down the back stairs, run down one flight of stairs. These aren't going to be people who are 95 living there.
We don't expect so.
Yeah.
My point is, there's only so much that we can do on certain things, and I think on things that are inside the building are things that I think we pass on. I mean, because this situation, if they don't get it right, and let's say there is pressure to do it, and they decide to do it, they can do it. They can just make whatever the changes are.
But just so I'm clear, the reason you're not making that an entrance in primarily is because of ADA, and you can't, there's stairs, and you can't provide a wheelchair access point. That's what you said last week.
That is one reason, and the other is the reason that Ms. McSherry brought up as well about safety and security there, both.
Yeah, the more it's used, the more safe it is, in all honesty, because then the second person that goes in will notice it was left open by a 14-year-old, leaves it open for his friends to come over. So in all honesty, the most dangerous stairwells in buildings were the ones that only like one or two units had access to, and they'd find, they'd figure out that it would be open for days.
Right.
No, actually, if 50 people use it, someone's going to report it if it doesn't work. If one person uses it, you have to count on that one or two person.
But if they don't have a secure unit, then that's on them, and the management company is making it secure, right? Are you saying the same thing? I don't know.
Yeah, well, they're propped, whatever, like that, yeah. I mean, you have to lock the security door, and self-closing, self-locking, but people will always prop them open.
But my concern is a little bit different in terms of the sort of case for, that's been made for how we got to this design. I don't disagree with the comments about, you know, maybe it helps a little bit with people from the commercial side not being able to use an entry on that side. I don't disagree with that. My concern is more of a sort of linking of arguments. So, no surprise that it strikes me that this site is particularly suitable to absorb a four-story building by using the topography, which, you know, we were told was really one of the things that was very attractive about the site to begin with. But the argument for not being able to use topography was that we wanted to create a close link and interaction between the residential buildings B and C and the commercial. And because of the desire to create that interplay, we were told we can't take advantage of the topography like we were originally told. But now...
To the back sort of extent, yeah.
Well, I mean, with the fill, it's not taking advantage of the topography that's present there, to lower that four-story building so that it's less apparent. So my concern is more of how the arguments are linked. Now, now, for reasons that I don't disagree with, the side of the residence facing the commercial is exit-only, which says to me that that's really less of a linking that we were told really was an imperative, to the point that it prevented taking advantage of the topography. In other words, I think the way this has turned out, with those doors being exit-only, at least to me, really weakens the case for how there has to be a strong interplay that prevented taking advantage of the topography. And so that's really what I'm struggling with, and I think those arguments are linked.
Well, I mean, there's a lot of ways that you integrate things. What we don't have here is a situation where I'm going to say is a mainstream America situation, where we have the residential that sits on top of the commercial, the old-fashioned, pure ultimate integration, and something that you would see in a little bit more of an urban environment. But if you really think about it, with the exception of the fact of the ingress or egress, physically, the buildings play together very well. Visually, they played it because they're on the same level. If you put the residential down lower than the commercial, you would have a fairly dramatic differentiation between the residential and commercial. You would notice it would be very visible. Here, it's arguably far more subtle, and the fact that they do have the entryway between the two buildings that they've created, that is a visual presence that I think links the front to the back very strongly. The only thing we're really arguing about now is a certain number of people would prefer to enter the building from one side versus the other side of the building, and under the design, they're not being allowed to do it. That's really the only, and we frankly don't, we don't know how much of that there really would be in practical purposes, whether people would do one or the other.
I do have a little different view. For me, it's not so much arguing how many people would want to enter. For me, it's the justification for not being able to take advantage of the topography is weakened, the justification is weakened to some degree by the way the design has turned out, which does not allow the flow of people, for reasons I don't disagree with. I'm just saying it weakens the justification.
But I think it only marginally weakens it, because your alternative would have been to have something that is completely remote and separate from them, that if you, if you put it in a hole, and you had the commercial up here and the residential down there with a bigger differentiation and a bigger slope difference, it would almost be perceived as two different projects. But what this does is, and I think it's the strength of it, is that it creates that street where you're on a level basis between the commercial and the residential, and provides more interplay. Yeah, maybe it's not perfect. I mean, originally, my thinking was a little bit, I'd like to have something that's very colonial, knock your lights out when you come down to that street. They arguably, it doesn't work given the size of the building, where, you know, maybe the market doesn't bear it or whatever, granted you that. But I think what they've come up with is a physical reasonable integration of the two things. One of the things that struck me about that Linfield thing was, when we looked at the pictures there, was that the residential was off in another world, you might as well not even have it as a, as part of the same thing, it was so far away. I was actually a little bit surprised by that. And here, I think there really is a better integration. I understand your point, that it's perhaps not as much as it conceivably could be, but it's actually, if you really think about it, visually, very tightly coupled, I think, between the front and the back, which is something, it doesn't come across as two separate projects, it comes across as one project.
And so for my part, it's not a case of putting it way in the back, it's not a case of putting it in a hole, it's a case of, there is a plateau with a drop-off there, which we were shown with the photos and the diagrams in the early meeting, and that affords, you know, one of the unique aspects of this site is, in fact, the diagram that showed the 35 height level going across from the road, and how the drop-off from the plateau absorbs that height, really one of the unique aspects of this site. By using the fill, we lose that, and we end up with a four-story building, which is very close to the grade of the road. Now, there are some sites where you have no choice, but this site, at least, I mean, I just have to say here, original presentations were very persuasive. It made very logical sense to leverage the characteristics of this site to help absorb the height of that building, and, you know, this is, this is not going to do that.
Well, but see, I think there's two elements to it, it's the height and it's the mass, it's the aggregate size of the building. Buildings are big buildings, they're long buildings, and arguably, they're tall buildings, but to the, but both of those factors are relevant factors. What they have gone is with the way they've, we've seen all the pictures, we've, you don't see the mass and the size of the residential buildings.
Well, you do, because, because it's nearly on the grade of the road, although the height of the front commercial has been raised, what we clearly saw was the row...
You see the top, but you don't see the whole...
Of the four-story, which, I mean, you can almost argue that although I, you know, I applaud the mitigation of raising the commercial, in a way, it almost accentuates the height, because in spite of raising the commercial, they're so big, the four-story still emerges.
You're only going to see the top, you're not going to see the bottom, and when, when I went out to Westwood, I thought that what you see the most is the entire mass from beginning to end, you notice it, this you don't notice because it's, it fades away into the background. I mean, we, I don't want to monopolize the discussion for that, because we're digressing.
I appreciate that.
But I think it's a good discussion. Let's go back to the point of what we were talking about, the ingress and the egress, and just from a board point of view, does anybody have any other points they want to raise about that?
The only thing I could see about this is, when you look at A and D, which are sort of above, okay, they're going to have the entrance coming down from the ceiling, if you would, if you can imagine it. So, those parking lots are going to fill up right away, because that's where people will want to park their cars, so they don't have to walk. And it'll tend to minimize the parking on the side of the commercial. And I was, I've been trying to think, you know, is that good or bad? There's going to be people from A and D who are going to be forced to park there and have to walk, they'll probably not like that, but I think it kind of minimizes the number of cars that are going to park in front of them, and C and D, and I'm happy, you know, that doesn't seem bad. So, I don't know, you know, I think if this is what they want to do, if it's bad...
Yeah, I think you do bring an interesting perspective. Lynn, you have a question?
How many stairs do you have on each of the four buildings on the egress side?
I think there's, there's four on building B, and six on building C.
And then D and E have zero, correct?
Yes.
A and...
D and E.
A.
A is the leasing office.
Okay. No, it's D and E, yeah.
D and E, yeah.
So those both, so those both have zero, so that's not, so really, we're only talking about B and C, okay.
And for B and C, the four and six steps go which way?
Down.
From the parking lot down to the building?
So you're going to have to have a trench drain?
Yes.
In there, so, and you said it's possible to ramp it. Trench drain, leaves, grass clippings, you're going to have all that maintenance issue with it.
It's not ideal, no.
No, it's not ideal.
But it's a balancing of trying to work with all the competing issues. I mean, there's, there's things that we haven't brought, you know, to the table with that have, that are at play here, and, you know, one of them's the water table, and getting drainage to work. So, we're, the commercial is not at the street level, it's below the street level, it's dug in, and that's caused many issues with, and complexities with the drainage system itself. We have, in, up in those parking lots, we have several closed drainage systems, because they're too close to the water table, because we dug the commercial into the ground. To lower that, to lower what's happening in buildings B and C, all to try to meet this balance. I think, I just wanted to make one, one more point with regards to the... I think, I just wanted to make one, one more point with regards to the, to these egress doors. And yes, this is a mixed-use development. Yes, we want that connectivity and that integration, but it is a residential project and a commercial project. And we need to lease the residential to, to, to our tenants that want to feel safe, they want to feel a sense of home. And yes, we want to use the commercial as an amenity, but it's not akin to what you said, Mr. Chairman, in the old days, where you lived above the retail. They are, they are renting apartments in a community that they want to feel safe. And I think we've provided that linkage to a great amenity and having commercial, having hopefully, a very vibrant restaurant, maybe more bank and other, other retail. But I think in a controlled manner with, with regards to the linkage and not haphazard. So we have, we do have the linkage down at the roundabout. The roundabout is a vehicular separation where they can feel like they're moving into their community and the, and the commercial is the commercial. But there is a pedestrian, there is pedestrian connectivity down at the roundabout. And there's, obviously, we've talked at length about the spine area and that focal point. So I think we've, we've done that for that reason, to provide some separation between the projects while keeping the connectivity and also from a, from a safety standpoint. So we are telling pedestrians, these are the places that, you know, we want you to move. And we're going to, we're going to accent that with, with lighting and, you know, other, other features that will, will draw the eye, draw the attention to that. Just with regards to buildings two and three, though, that, that corner of build, that side of building two as a restaurant is, is seen as the business end. That's where the kitchen will be, that's where the kitchen door will be, that, the main entrance to that one and the patio is on the south side to take, to take experience, to take advantage of the sunlight. So, so that tends to be the focus of that, that building. You come down to buildings three and four and, and the restaurants on building four on the south side, again, with that outside patio to, again, take advantage of the southern light. So that tends to be the, the focal area. I wouldn't say that the area between two and three is a, is a service alley, but it's, it's definitely not, as you can see some, from some of the plantings and planters and amenities and patios, it's not the focus of the, the area between one and two and the area between three and four. So, it, there has been a lot of thought here to, to all of these issues, to, to hit the mark on, on the, all of the issues that need to be balanced.
So, any other questions on this? What, what else do we have?
Gene, I think we want Jeff to talk about the height waiver memo that he did and the Concom issue. Does that work? Jeff?
Good evening, board members. Jeff Brown from Princeton Properties. Before our last meeting, I prepared a, I think some, Mr. Boynton had suggested we prepare a rationale relative to the height waiver. So I did that. It's entitled "Special Permit Height Waiver," and I turned that in two or three weeks ago. So I don't know if anyone's had a chance to review that, and we want to just get into questions. I think the presentation of it, everyone tonight, just listening, has touched on the major points about differences in elevations, the spine, Joe touched on the water table angle. So all these are factors in the height waiver as well, but I'm happy to go through it very peripherally, and then we can dive into any questions. Section 7.4, the bylaws, requires that all properties meet the, the heights in that Table Two regulation. So there would be a 35-foot height minimum here, a maximum here. And then there's several exceptions to that bylaw, and one of them is Section Six, which accepts from the height restriction, a parcel, a parcel's collectively comprising five acres of land located in a B-2 zoning district eligible for the waiver of maximum height for residential multifamily dwellings and townhouses described under Table Two. Provided the height waiver shall not permit a structure to exceed more than four stories and 55 feet in height and further provided the waivers granted by the planning board as a special permit pursuant to the criteria under 10.31. So just starting with the beginning of the bylaw itself, 7.4, 0.6, you know, we are a parcel that exceeds five acres. I believe we are collectively 14 acres for the total mixed use, we're 10 acres on the residential section. It is a residential and multifamily use as required under the bylaw. The structures do not exceed four stories and 55 feet in height, two of the buildings are 55 feet in height and two of the buildings are 54 feet in height. And the remaining issue would be the typical criteria for special permit under 10.3.1, 10.31. And I've gone through each of those, they're rather narrative in nature, and, you know, how does it affect the neighborhood and things of that nature that I think you can read. I don't think there's anything specific to this site that distinguishes the criteria, and I think it's well-suited within the general criteria for a special permit. So the central point is, as Mr. Boynton has mentioned, that initially, we came before this board in April and said we were going to take care of the natural, we want to incorporate the natural topography of the site, which does slope about 30 feet from, on average, from Osgood Street to the back of the site. We were going to incorporate that 30-foot of drop, of drop in elevation into the building so that there would be minimal visibility from Osgood Street. And that was what we told the board in April, and Mr. Boynton's exactly correct, that's, that's what we represented. At that time, we were very preliminary in our site due diligence. We had not done any soil sampling, we had purely done some elevations off a topographical map. And I believe, as, as Joe mentioned, you know, when we got into our site due diligence and really got into the soils, water tables, you know, all the compositions of the site, it became obvious that we weren't going to be able to incorporate that entire 30-foot drop-off in the site. As Joe mentioned, there's a water table, so then, from the water table, you've got a separation from, to building, from the water table, you've got to clear all of your stormwater management. So we truly could just not build everything right from the pure elevation of the, of the soil itself. It became obvious, you know, we were going to have to bring this soil up to accommodate the stormwater management system. And so that became a factor in this design, and I think, you know, Joe hit on the key points that we believe substantiate the height waiver. It's a balancing. It really is a balancing of all the different factors that have become part of this site. And most notably, those factors are that, you know, this board was clear, you wanted to see one development versus a commercial development separated from a residential development. And so part of that factor became two issues. One was what we've now commonly referred to Main Street or the, the parking area between B and C and the, and the commercial units. And also, part of that commonality, if you will, was this pedestrian connection spine. It was the true characteristic of the site that really drew the two properties together, that we, that we had this connectivity and that people could walk in between the two. It's emphasized on the plan as, as a, as a dramatic feature within the site. And so, you know, part of the balancing became, how do you incorporate elevation and still maintain connectivity? And so we, we believe that we have done the best we can, given the site elevations and all the other, the soil compositions and all those things, to come up with the best design that we, we can, to maintain connectivity and to maintain this, this Main Street aspect. As, as the chairman said before, if we were truly to incorporate that 30-foot of depth of drop, you would have a commercial site and some way down below it, you would have a residential site. So all these pedestrian spines that you see would have a significant elevation drop. We could not design these pedestrian spines with those elevation changes in compliance with ADA and maintain that spine, that commonality, that special feature to this site and maintain ADA compliant, which only allows a 2% grade. So these grades would be significantly higher and your spines would end up to be switchbacks crossing back and forth in order to maintain two degrees of elevation to achieve that length of whatever the length of the spine is. So the only way to maintain the spine was to use the elevations that we, we have. And we did, although we did not drop the property, the, the development 30 feet, we did achieve some use of the elevations. And the, the B building is 14 feet below the grade of Osgood Street. C building is 11 feet below the grade of Osgood Street. As you go to the back of the site, the D building is 23 feet below the grade of the Osgood's site. And the E building, which would be far to the right, is 17 feet below the, the Osgood Street grade itself. So while we didn't achieve the maximum usage of the elevation drop, I think as percentage, I came out 55 to 60% of the elevation drop has been incorporated into the, into the design itself. So we are, we are using a significant portion of the elevation, we just, we weren't able to use all of it because of these two balancing factors, as Joe said. We had our engineering features relative to the soil, and we had this, this approach of commonality, this approach of being one development and connecting it by the pedestrian access. The other point that I would raise is, the whole purpose of using the elevation was to create an effect of masking so that you wouldn't see so much of these four-story buildings. And I believe that by incorporating the raising of the height of the, of the commercial and the roofline structure that we've used, that we have significantly masked the, the site. So I think we've achieved the same result as was intended by incorporating the 30-foot drop as we have by incorporating these lesser drops by increasing the commercial, the most that you're seeing, I know that we have, we have some elevation show, I think on one angle of building B, you see the four-story, and I believe in all the rest of the buildings, if we can find any of those elevations, you really just see a roofline. So I believe we've achieved the same purpose as was our intent to incorporate the elevation to mask the buildings by just using lesser elevations and increasing the, the height of the commercial. And I believe as, you know, Andrew mentioned, you know, where we'd step these buildings down into their natural elevations, again, we could not maintain these connectivities, we could not maintain these pedestrian access paths because of ADA. And you literally would see, just as you had mentioned, you'd see a commercial set of buildings, and then way in the back, you'd see sunk down a residential building, there would be, it would be extremely difficult, if not impossible, to create on any connectivity or commonality because these straight pedestrian spines are not feasible under ADA because of the grade difference.
Chairman, has we ever emphasized that we wanted to have an integrated development as opposed to two separate? I don't recall ever us suggesting that.
Oh, I mean, I did.
Did you? We did?
Yeah, I think that was the, we did one of them separate.
Okay, then that makes sense.
I'm having a little trouble with part of the discussion. I thought that the points you made that were particularly helpful to me were that when you made your initial presentation, you had not done the soil analysis and the water table, and that was very helpful. Those are things I had not heard before. But it seems like an awful lot of your explanation tonight is about the ADA and the impact of the grade if you use the existing topography. And you made it very clear that when you did the initial presentation, what you told us tonight was, your case study that you had done then had only examined the topography and grades. So why wouldn't it have been obvious to you then, if you knew the topography and grades, that the ADA was not going to be met? And at the same time, you told us, we're going to take advantage of the grade. So I'm just struggling with that part of the argument.
Well, I think part of it becomes when you try to, when you try to connect the two structures itself, that's when you're bringing the ADA into compliance. Were it not for this issue of connectivity, our only obligation under the ADA would be to connect all of the buildings in a circle around to the clubhouse. We would have no obligation to connect the residential properties to the commercial properties at all. We would, we could comply with ADA down in a hole. You just would be down in a hole.
But it, it's not a hole.
It's a depth.
It's part of a very compelling presentation that showed there's a shelf and then a lower level where the, where in fact, you have D and E cited. So the D and E are not in a hole.
No, I, I agree, and I, I think the other issue is just the, the point that you raised. We, I think initially, were it not for the soils, the depth of the water table, we believed that we could bring buildings B and C or start them at a different elevation, and we weren't able to do that because of the soils, the, the depth of the water table and the clearance necessary to incorporate all of the stormwater management. But that aside, that then all connected with this concept of connectivity. We could have still done them at a lower level, we wouldn't have had the connectivity. When you, when you match the connectivity between residential and commercial, now you're connecting a, a different set of elevations. You're connecting an elevation here to an elevation here, which has nothing to do with the, the height of that commercial, of the residential building. It's when you're trying to bring them together with the commercial that you're now connect, you're, you're creating a connectivity that brings into, into reality an ADA issue.
Peter, I think that...
The connectivity using the spine.
In the spine, correct.
Some other connectivity possibly could have worked.
Well, my point, my point was, the only obligation of connectivity we would have were it not for the, the direction of connecting the two, making the, these two separate developments appear as one development would be to connect our residential buildings together so that someone could walk from one building to the next building, to the next building, to the leasing center, which all, all could be done without, without the spines, without the pedestrian spines.
And I just wanted to mention as well, just to add on to what Jeff is saying, when we first started this discussion, not even before the planning board, we had discussions with the neighborhood. We indicated that we were still in our preliminary due diligence, and there wasn't a whole lot that we could do until we get through the process a little bit further. I think I mentioned to this board through the rezoning process that we still hadn't completed our full due diligence, because we're not going to make a full representation that we can absolutely do that. We wouldn't do that. But I think that this board has done a tremendous job in terms of the visualization for those people who are coming out of Barker Street, who are coming out of French Farm Road, who are looking at this development. And I think that we've made it clear that based on the, the massing and the commercial building size and, and its context with the residential, that I think, I think what's happened... what's happened is that we've made a great visual change to what, you know, what we initially started with.
Part of what I'm struggling, I hate to admit this, but I actually sat through the video of the April meetings, because I was wondering, have I, has my memory misrepresented this? And I, I have to compliment you on the presentations, they were compelling. And it was not a glancing reference to the uniqueness of this site and how the topography offered an opportunity for a height waiver. It was not a glancing reference. It was repeated reference. It was repeated photographs showing that. It was repeated diagrams. In other words, it was really reinforcing the central element of this site as the basis for the height waiver. So, that's part of what I'm struggling with. The other part is this. This was part of how we represented this to town meeting. So, I'm, I'm struggling with that.
Okay, well, let me, let me put it this way, I guess, you know, how many neighbors do you see here this evening? And the reason why you don't see a lot of neighbors here this evening is because we brought them through the process, we identified what we were going to do, and we went back to them and talked to them, and continued to dialogue. And you don't see them here this evening, for, most of them, you don't see them here this evening, you don't see them here jumping up and down screaming, complaining. And so, I think, you know, I think we've done our, our job to the, with the neighborhood, working and interfacing with the neighborhood, but I also think that this board has done its job in, in developing a visual that works. And so, I mean, all along, we've said we wanted to integrate and have mixed, integrate the residential and the commercial uses and have a mixed-use development. This, the site screams for it. I mean, it's been sitting 16 years, and, and so...
I get it.
Yeah.
And I understand what you're saying, but I don't know what you want the response to be. Do you want them to change the, the structures, or what do you think that you're looking for?
I did read your memo and read it carefully. Went back to the bylaws and, you know, I really have, your, your work was not wasted. So, what do I want them to do? It strikes me that when we look at the waiver requirements here, for me at least, it is under the five criteria under section 1031, it's criteria A, which is specific site is an appropriate location for such a use and structure. And I think what we represented to the town was, yes, it is, because we can take advantage of unique topography.
But I don't see how we're not.
What do you want? Are you saying, okay, because they can't meet this, I'm just going to vote against the project? Or is there anything they can do? Because...
That's what I'm asking. That's exactly right.
The answer...
What's their answer?
The answer is, if, if you want to step the buildings down to their original elevation, and I think we spelled this out in the memo, then, you know, that can be done, but we cannot maintain these pedestrian spines. You will not have connectivity between these two properties. You cannot do it. That's the simple answer.
It's a really simple thing. We have a choice between adhering to the height concept as originally presented or maintaining the spine connectivity.
Can I ask a question? Was there some other form of connectivity considered? If a spine wouldn't work, could you connect B to building two with some other way? I mean, like, was there some other analysis to say there's other options or not?
The only property that I can think of that is a good analogy to this, and it's not a perfect analogy, but it actually deals with, because I don't think you're picking up on what the thing would look like if we stuck it in the ground like this and had two separate things. I think if you look on 114, you know, where Burton's is, is, is a good example, because you got slope, it's a little bit more severe slope, and granted, there's the law, the bank in the middle and stuff. But what you have on that property is, the first part of it's level, but then when you go down to where stables are, you go down, whoo, like that, and then when you go down to the next property, it's like a cliff. And the problem is, what you would have is, if you did it this way, you would almost have a cliff between the front and the back of the property. You would have to put in guardrails, all sorts of things to prevent cars from falling over, because you would have things that were completely separate. It frankly would look like hell, I think. It wouldn't look right, because there were two things separate, and to protect cars and people, you would have to put things that almost completely separate.
And then you're talking about throwing in residential in that same area.
Well, you're, yeah, you would have to put the residential lower, and then what you would have to do is you, for the parking, you would have to send people, you, you would have to put barriers there, because you, protection.
Yeah, and as I said before, if you wanted to have connectivity between residential portion, if you put it down much, much lower, and the residential, in order to achieve ADA compliance, you can only increase grade 2%. So, the spine would turn into these huge Z's, because you'd have switchback, you have to have a resting spot back, so they would, they would turn into these awkward, awful-looking Z's in order to achieve the same distance that we've achieved there.
I think you'd have to put other retaining walls in.
Yeah, I mean, retaining walls, guardrails, yes, the whole pit. It would, it would look, it would look awful. The other point that I'd make is, yes, it's true, we, you know, we made an initial representation in, in April that we would maximize slope, and, you know, we had all four buildings maximize at least 50% of the elevation. So, it isn't, isn't as if we totally ignored the use of elevation in the site design. These buildings use at least 50% of the natural elevation.
And the big issue with the neighborhood was not building height, it was traffic. It was the signal.
So, I think this is a good long discussion, and I think you sort of, you're picking up one of the conversation, and I think it's a good civil conversation, so I thank you all. But could we then, this is a good time to segue to this latter.
I'd like to make a couple of points on this. I don't disagree with you, Peter, on the original presentation, but I think for the residents, they would prefer to have a little bit less grade. We're, you know, we're talking about the four stairs and the six stairs for building B and C, which I think is for different reasons. A lot of people don't like using the elevators, those elevators, they're going to put in as low as elevators in the world. Just if it's on third floor, you can be out of the building, in your car, and out the driveway by the time the elevator comes. That's why I know that people sometimes like those rear doors and the stairs and stuff. But if you had a 30-foot drop, the back buildings getting up to a Starbucks in the front or some sort of coffee shop would have a hike up a hill versus the residents of B and C having to walk around the front. It's not ideal, but they, but having a little bit less of a grade change is probably preferable to have to connectivity than a 30-foot. Because then you'd be at like 30 feet west of the hill. Wait, they don't, like, walk up the hill from the parking lot. So, it's a trade, it's a trade-off.
I don't think it's binary, what it is, or 30. It's some intermediate level.
In the middle, so, but it would have been around 30, you know, if they had kept it all, but I'm just saying, it's, looking at the whole scheme of it, B and C is an ideal, D and E's better, but it's sort of like a mix now. It's not perfect, I think it's probably the best one.
Yeah, nothing of this rule is perfect, but I will tell you, I think the solution that they ended up with to integrate the two is actually one of the better pieces of design and engineering I've seen in a long time.
Integration, agreed. I think it's more important than having them separate.
I think the way you describe it is, B and C, if they were sunk, the residents of the first floor, and maybe part of the second, would look out at a cement wall.
Yeah, we'd take a wall, you know.
Yeah, and I've lived in areas in Chicago where things were like that, and it's not attractive, so.
Let's move on, yeah, sure, come right on.
Tom Dogg, 95, Chicago, D.C. So, I had a question. So, originally, when it was presented to town meeting, they asked for between 160 and 190 units. So, do they have to get 190? Could they go with three floors? Because, I mean, you could get all the...
You answered that question. If you were going to, if you were the developer...
Oh, if I was the developer, I'd go for five floors.
No, 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 but I'm saying, beyond a certain point, beyond, and, and I'm not trying to be at all contentious with you, but this is really a relevant issue, is if you were the developer and you had to put a certain amount of site prep into the site regardless, would you, aside from not making more money, would you have a point at which you couldn't make any money more?
Yes, I would, but I figure they went in with 160, 190, two-town meeting, so they had to have done some due diligence before to know where their, their, their points were. So, it has to be close.
Right, but it's...
So, I'm just saying, maybe make the two front buildings three floors and put the back ones four floors, so that way you can not get this...
But at some point, you would acknowledge that the economics of it are such that...
Oh, I do, but I just, as I said, they came in with 160, so they run a business, they're, they're much smarter than me at running their apartments, so they had an idea where the break even was.
Yeah.
Probably coming into town meeting.
Right, but remember, aside from the, the height waiver, everything that they propose is in line with zoning.
Totally agree, I'm not, it's more...
I think a lot of the ratio and their...
Yeah, so, but...
The well on the numbers on the ratios.
Yeah, again, and I'm not trying to be contentious, but the, the problem ends up being is, like it or not, the more you, if you have less density, that's less revenue, and that means that some of the amenities that you might get might go away. So, and at some point, it compromises the overall. What we're trying to figure out is, you know, with the margin, how important it is, and how is that going to have an impact on...
I just, I mean, you're looking from Old Farm. If you go down Barker and look over, you're going to see these, because I drive down the hill, the people live across the street. You see these from, if you go up, at the end, going onto 125 from Old Farm, Barker is raised up compared to when you go down past Barker Farm.
But if you're going down Barker, at some point, you're not going to see anything, because it's, you're going downhill.
You still will, coming up the hill, going down the hill, you will see some. But, and just to a point of the neighbors aren't here, the neighbors were here at the beginning, they've been through some. They can't be at every meeting, and they're, I'm the only one here, I understood that, but after a while, they start to realize, this is going to happen, but just trying to put our, you know, my two cents into the height of the buildings.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
You know, what, what we're trying to do on this, and what they've tried to do, is to not force them to take the shortcuts that they could take if they made it a 40B.
Yeah, I understand that. I'm trying to, if I can, to try to add anything in for food or something.
And the rezoning was, was simply a, a process issue, because the uses were allowed here to begin with, before we went to town meeting, so...
Go, could we talk a few seconds about the, the petition? Everybody's in the, Gene, could you, or maybe Rebecca's, just, everybody put the petition...
Can I mention one thing before we get into that, Mr. Chairman? We respectfully needed understanding from this board as to their acceptability or acceptance of the height waiver, because all of this design feeds into what Joe has designed for stormwater management.
Right, no, I understand, but I guess, you listen to it, you should be able to figure out where we stand.
Fair enough.
Yeah.
The citizens' petition...
People, assistant counsel will help you on that, so, you know.
There is a citizens' petition, yeah. I think if they characterize it correctly, is sent in by a group. I believe they represent 220 households. They talk about development along Osgood Street, the, the increase in development of commercial. And their request is that we ask that your office impose mitigation measures to development that includes sidewalks and bike lanes on both sides of Osgood Street from the development to the intersection of Osgood Street and Grape Horn Road at Butcher Boy Plaza. So, that's the gist of the...
The petition is to Mass D.O.T. It's not to us, right?
Right.
It's, it's the same sort of petition that was made back in 2001, when the project was first reviewed.
By the same gentleman that...
So, yeah, so he, no, I'm not sure everybody had signed it, picked up on the nuance of it, but he, he clearly understands that it's, it's not something, a condition that we can impose, because it's off-site improvements.
Correct.
So, and I mean, I don't, I don't know if anybody has any sort of thoughts, but I mean, I think we do have to mention that, that we can't condition somebody fixing something on the other side of the street to go down by Butcher Boy, it just, unfortunately, it just doesn't work like that, so...
Understood.
No one has contacted the planning department that I'm aware of, other than one resident to ask for a copy of that, that he had heard of it and asked for a copy, which was supplied to him.
Got it, okay.
I think the final issue is to give the board an update on status relative to Conservation Commission. As Joe mentioned, they're finishing up some final soil samples, which will then complete Lisa Edgelson's analysis of the stormwater management system and its design, and confirm Joe's assumptions relative to the soil content. Those hopefully will be done within the next week. With their completion, I think Lisa's going to be able to finalize in TEC their comments relative to the stormwater design, which will also be a factor to be considered by the Conservation Commission. That should line us up perfectly with a submission date of November 4th to the CONCOM, and their next available hearing is November 16th.
The day after your planning board meeting.
Okay.
So, so I think what we may be doing is, you know, we, we hope to wrap up a lot of these outstanding matters in terms of remaining peer review with, with respect to tech, hopefully wrap up the remaining stormwater matters with Lisa Edgelson, and hopefully wind up and resolve any outstanding issues with respect to the peer review of the sewer pump station matter by the first. But because we won't have the benefit of the input from the Conservation and Commission until after the planning board hearing, that perhaps what we might do is, is instead of, is, you know, hopefully we'll, we'll wrap up most outstanding issues by the first, and then continue to the 29th, I believe, of, of November, and after, prior to which time we'll at least have one hearing before the Conservation Commission and get feedback from them.
Okay, so, our first December meeting is on November 4th or something, so you suggest...
I think it's the last meeting, it's the 29th.
We only meet twice, so our second meeting is the 15th.
So, it might be 12-6, you're saying?
Yes, yes, so our next meeting would be 12-6 after their hearing.
Correct, their hearing is 16th, so we would not be having a meeting, I believe, on the 15th, or we would not, assuming we wrap up all the peer review at the next meeting on the 30th, I believe.
Yeah, I mean, you know, our preference has always been to do them simultaneously to the extent that, you know, I think the importance of that is if they come up with anything significant in their site before the, we make our decision, because to have that on the table. So, I'm glad you're able to somehow accommodate the two, yeah.
And I would only caution that I anticipate some of the comments, especially on the civil side, is more of a recommendation-type comment, where maybe not by law required. Some of those may be deferred back to determine whether you'd like to condition them, whether you agree with the recommendation and condition it. So, we may need a meeting for that. So, the 15th may still be on the table. If you feel as though by the first you've, you've replied.
Understood.
I anticipate more on the civil that some of these will be deferred to the board.
Okay.
An example of which is around the Rotary. Tech initially recommended maybe reducing some of the parking, so that queues don't come into the Rotary. Again, not required, the comment was acknowledged. However, I don't think the plan to date has been reflective of, it may have been the latest...
Well, I think two of those, two of those spaces are now, because of the landscaping issue, eliminated.
Because of the landscaping, the last meeting, yeah, I haven't looked at that kind of detail, but that type of comment has been made.
Okay.
There are a couple of items like that. That tech's recommendation is to remove all the parking prior to the roundabout.
Yeah, on this side of it too, so there was a couple coming off of it at the residential end, but to the clubhouse side, they had some concerns as well, so...
Yeah.
But that's, that's fine, I'm just giving you that as one example that maybe needs further discussion with the board.
Okay.
Okay. Good, great, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
A robust discussion.
All right, would you, would you like Rebecca to kind of tune this up?
Sure, yes, yes. So if you could summarize where we are and what's still open, that would be great.
The applicant seeks the construction of a new continuing care retirement center with forty units in the small home style. The applicant is currently before the Z B A for a variance in a new structure. They were supposed to go before the board on the eighteenth, however, it was continued for November first. They will be the first item on the agenda. We received the drafted easement and received confirmation from the building commissioner that the frontage is legal non-conforming and therefore meets the requirements. We just received the conservation restriction today, excuse me, the draft conservation restriction. We received, um, civil review comments, and the applicant is in, um, process of responding to those comments. The applicant has responded to the stormwater comments, and currently Lisa and their, their civil designer are looking into, um, some of the items concerning the most recent test pits. Conservation has met with the applicant again on site to review these proposed parking changes for Half Mile Hill. Conservation has stated that because the prior access and parking was part of an approved order of conditions, the applicant will need conservation approval before construction begins. All other department comments have been addressed, and we believe that if we can wrap up some of the review comments, we should be able to start drafting a decision for the next meeting.
Okay, good. Great.
Wait, is that for Z B A, right?
I'm sorry?
Well, the Z B A, we.
Anticipate on November first that they would rule at a, worst case is, you can decide whether you want to condition the variance, because they cannot construct without being afforded that variance.
What do you have, owls, what do you, no.
What are all set with, long-eared bats?
The bats.
And the moths. The bats and the moths are out of the picture now.
Oh, okay. So I was gonna say, I think we're.
Right, so, I think there were quorum issues, or of the quorum, there were going to be two regulars and two alternates, so they opted to continue to November first. So again, you know, it's going to come down to either it having to be conditioned if we don't have a decision, or you can opt to wait for another meeting if, if you choose.
Okay, good. All yours.
Thank you. Again, Ken Costello, S M R T Architects and Engineers, handover mass. Uh, just wanted to go through a few items. Um, we did receive comments from Lisa Eggleston and from T E C. We have responded, we've provided response, uh, earlier today. Just want to go through some of the comments there. Melissa can go through, um, our, the response to the stormwater, um, and where we are with that, but just wanted to, um, there was an issue, T E C had mentioned a question about the frontage, and the building inspector has confirmed that, uh, frontage is, is all set, all set. There was some questions from D P W on the sewer layout and sewer pump system that was forwarded them to on Friday last week. Um, we have not received any comments on that. They were just looking for the, the pipe call-out and what, what the material was, but we have submitted details to them. Few minor modifications to the plan. We had, we had proposed a parking area here for Half Mile Hill, extending the gravel area, um, on this lawn. Instead, we've got, uh, with the applicant, we've dedicated now these three spots for parking for Half Mile Hill. Currently, there's three parking spaces, um, associated with the gravel lot that's in this area right here. So these three spaces will be dedicated with signage for Half Mile Hill parking, and there's two existing that's already paved ones that, that are here. Along with that modification, we were showing some, uh, four more overflow parking spaces for paving. Those have been removed out of the project at this time, um, due to some concerns about buffer zones.
So those were shown within the, for conservation, so the order we made out of that, they've moved them back. We reviewed those, we've both done for conservation, and we've set them for the last time, the size of the trails in the steering. He has not provided any comments back, other than verbally, he said, he thought it was okay.
Yeah, there's an off-site wetland that's, that's up here, so, uh, so those were removed from the project. Other than that, really, had, there has not been a lot of modifications to the plan. T E C's con, one comment was, we have a crosswalk here that connects this building, um, to a walk system that brings you over here. One of the comments was, T E C was looking for stop signs, um, at that crosswalk. Um, we would, um, the, the, the amount of physical traffic, pedestrian traffic, we don't feel that warrants a stop sign, um, so that somebody coming in here would have to stop here first, or somebody's come out of the parking lot, there's a stop sign here before entering this driveway, and then coming up and stopping again. Uh, if signage is required, we could put in a, a yield pedestrian, um, at the crosswalk, but none of the crosswalks on campus now are signed. Again, you know, that driveway there is, is servicing just the, uh, just the, um, the small house program, uh, facility. Those are pretty much the major comments regarding, um, it was one of the question, uh, T E C had a question about the pavers and whether the ADA compliant, and they are compliant, they, they do meet the ADA compliance, uh, Mass Architectural Access Board. So that was pretty much it for the site plans, and, I mean, most of the, most of T's, T E C's comments, um, there were a few issues regarding, um, conditions for the, when we talked about deeding the two properties together at the, at the, at the, uh, at the end of the approval process. But Melissa can give you kind of a, just a quick synopsis on, on the stormwater, and if you have any other questions, she.
And I'm Melissa Flynn with S M R T. Didn't get a chance to talk last time since we had so many other great things to talk about. So you guys spared the fun stormwater comments. Um, so we've had two rounds of detailed, um, responses and then comments back to Lisa. She's working on her second round right now. Um, I spoke to her this morning. Um, there was only, I think, eight comments, and really, there's only the major one that she's waiting on is the additional testing at the infiltration structure that we're putting over here. Um, when we did our follow-up, um, testing, we did not, um, get additional information there, so that'll be done tomorrow. But overall, um, the design really hasn't changed, based on even all of, um, Lisa's comments. So the, the major ones from the first round was, she wanted us to confirm the soil conditions, um, because the mapping said that there was C and D soils, which typically is not great for infiltration. Um, our testing came back that there were B soils, which is, which is good for infiltration. So we've updated our, our model to reflect the, the better soils, as well as using the required infiltration rate that the Mass D E P requires. So all of our, um, all of our model and all of our calculations now has a consistent infiltration rate, um, which is what was one of her big, big items. From the original comment, um, originally, we had, we didn't have an even distribution of kind of the, uh, the impervious area to each of the sections, and now, most of this parking lot will be directed to the infiltration gallery back here, the driveway, and this section of the building is going to this infiltration structure, and then this back corner of the building is going to the one at the rear. So, um, working with Lisa's comments, it definitely made a little more, uh, a lot more sense to break it up that way. So that's kind of the change from her, her first, um, her first round of comments. And then really, as I stated, it was, the second round is just confirming the soil, um, which will be getting tomorrow, um, and then the report, um, beginning of next week. Um, and other than that, she seemed like we were on the right track in going forward, um, so I'm very confident we'll be able to work those last items out.
So additional confirm the soils, confirm the groundwater.
Yes.
As well. So the table, again, so very similar to the last project, only on a much smaller scale. There's one site that she just wants to confirm, the soil analysis and the groundwater separation. Um, I spoke to her today, and she said everything is headed in a good direction. Um, she's just waiting on those results.
I mean, you know, she's always picked up, I think, the significant things. Obviously, since this is the worst, uh, close to the lake, we want to pay particular attention to everything reasonable, or, you know, a little beyond reason, if it gets further than that, so.
Yeah, then we've, um, as I said, they're doing the additional testing now. I think, uh, in our original, um, geotechnical report, um, she had seen some notes about that the groundwater was at nine point two and nine point three, and she had some concerns since we have been in a drought. So trying to looking at the, the soil mottling and, um, the other indications within the soil, since obviously it is so low right now, but the geotechnical engineers, um, are much smarter than I am, um, will, will tell us exactly, from the condition of the soil, they can give a better estimate of how high the groundwater is, even in drought conditions like this.
Okay.
And then questions from the board.
Other information in the packet was related to the easement to the property now, and vacating a certain section of an existing easement and relocating it. We have those plans, if you want to just see what that will look like.
Yep. This is from out from the street.
From the street, right. So it's Pond pasture lane on a plan from, I think, nineteen fifty-nine, is on the screen, the highlighted area. So where that meets, right at the intersection of where Osgood Street and Stevens Street intersect, at the very lower end of the screen. So that's not used today, it's actually got a small gate across it, um, and it's a grass path up through to, you see it intersect with the main roadway, about halfway up the screen.
What does that mean, practically speaking? I, I, I mean, if it's not, i- i- if it's not sort of coincident with the road, it can't be traveled upon, will never be traveled upon, what, what difference does it make?
To the town?
Paul.
Mr. Jim, Paul Henstrom.
Yeah, Paul, can you come up?
She shed some, some light on that. All of the Stevens properties developed over the years, that's the reserved sixty-foot road to Pond pasture, and it, non-exclusive rights, the, the Pond pasture parcel we're dealing with, town has non-exclusive rights, multiple parties have non-exclusive rights that own large tracts of land near the lake. Now, of course, now the town owns the entirety of those parcels, and, uh, working with your board and with Jeannie, we, we've, we've come up with a suggestion, a solution, I think, that, that, of course, that, that doesn't exist in the field, and the roadways do. So we're, we're, we're migrating, suggesting a migration, an abandonment of the, of this, of the old, and, and an express grant.
Right, this is the old, so appearing a, a section of this, and that section would be where Stevens Street.
We would just move it to where the roadway is.
Right.
Correct. And, and there's an easement plan, which is the next plan that'll, that'll show.
We have the next one, yeah. So, but it's only that lower portion there, and it would, the town would vacate that easement.
There you go.
So who put the gate up? Any idea? It's the council of, or?
I don't know.
No idea.
No, it's like one of those triangular type gates.
I think the only one that accesses it would be National Grid, because there are some poles on that, um, on that easement.
There probably, there must be a separate easement agreement for that, the National Grid, so.
So. Now, that's, that's, that's the primary roadway up Caroline Way, and then, then the left turn at the top to the gravel road.
Yeah.
The, in effect, the original Pond pasture location, which is half on, on Edgewood property, half on the school property. That's the easement physically.
Okay.
Okay, so, a draft language has been submitted, but again, we would condition pending our town council review of this, as well as the C R.
We have to, don't we have to accept, do you get easement at town meeting, too?
Yes. Well, um, the selectmen can accept it at a selectman meeting, at town meeting, we grant them the authority to accept.
Oh, that's right, yeah. Okay.
Yeah, and that, and that, that addresses the board's original concern about, let's get an express grant of access that's primary on a road to all the trails, et cetera, which is exactly what that does.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just a, a point of information on the, on the, on the Conservation Commission's letter, um, we're reviewing that, and we understand their question, but our, our view is, of course, this site plan and this project that everyone has worked so hard on is under the purview of your jurisdiction exclusively, unless we are jurisdictionally involved in a Conservation Commission protected area, and we're not. This is a very carefully designed project that does not impinge on any of the areas the Concom is, is charged with, with reviewing. We don't quite understand their, their concern about the, the parking, uh, for Half Mile Hill. That's a parking relocation as part of this site plan, which is under your jurisdiction. So we may go to the, to the Conservation Commission to talk to them, but we, we're kind of struggling with their, their analysis.
Yeah, it's not a permit situation, it's more because they have care, custody, and control of Half Mile Hill, and the trail is fully on Edgewood's property at this point. It's just going to intersect with town property. There's been discussions between Conservation, the applicant, Conservation and myself.
Are there any issues with them? I mean, or basically, is everybody in agreement, and?
Well, there's, there's no, we, we have no area of disagreement, because we have no area on our project that.
Is relevant to Conservation.
No, I, I do understand that. I guess, maybe, let me phrase the question another way, is that they look at it from a perspective of being stewards of land.
Yes.
Which they are, with respect to Half Mile Hill.
Uh, so, is what's being proposed cause any problems with them, given their, their role, I guess, is, or?
They state their order of conditions as their background for that, as they approved the initial access, and they improved the initial parking spaces that were associated with Half Mile Hill, and therefore, because that's going to change, they are asking that they go before the board and seek their approval.
Oh, in a formal manner, I say.
Yes. In their memo, um, the Conservation Administrator did state that it can be a general business item in front of the, the board at a public hearing, um, so they didn't ask for special filing.
I guess, it feels to be that if they go, if you go to them just as good neighbors, what's the harm in that?
Will you come with us?
What makes you think they like me?
The, the two thousand and eight order of conditions describes, uh, in a fairly ambiguous way, their, uh, requirement of, actually, the wording is, we very much appreciate the applicant's willingness to create some, some improved parking in that area which is owned by Edgewood. Moving the parking to a better location to, uh, this project is, again, not a concern of the Conservation Commission, jurisdictionally or otherwise. We can go talk to them, I suppose, it's entirely up to Edgewood, uh, but it is with respect to their care, custody, and control over Half Mile Hill, which has no bearing whatsoever on our project, we.
Right. I, I guess, it would seem to me almost like, maybe just come into the office someday and talk to them, I mean, and find out really what's on their mind, or not, W D U's is what it is.
They've had that.
Bob's a pretty charming guy. Paul, I don't know.
Try, try again, I guess. Try, try again.
And then, did you also want to mention the, um, C R from?
Yes, so that was submitted.
Trustees of the reservation.
Right, it was submitted today, it was added to the packet, we can send it via email if you'd like. Um, but again, I would foresee that being conditioned with town council review. It's with trustees of reservations, which holds the other one. But I didn't even get to open it today.
I.
Okay. And you think it, you think it's okay? Okay. Um, but yes, it, again, a, a condition.
Yeah, okay. And you can send that out?
Yes, yeah. It, I, did you add it to the packet?
It is in the packet, yes.
So if you go to the same agenda, like.
I just added it today.
It came in late today, yeah.
He, what he, what David, um, did reference in the email, um, what's the other group? What was the?
Green Belt.
Green Belt. He said it's very similar to the one that you folks just did with Green Belt recently, or the last time that there was a, a C R done, so he just adapted it to us.
I think that was those CPC, didn't you just partner with Green Belt?
The one out on the, uh.
Leonard Farm, I believe.
Leonard Farm, yeah, on the, uh, Edge of Town there.
So that didn't come through planning, but.
Oh, it didn't? Oh, okay.
There was some CPC funding on the project.
But, yeah, it was just CPC, but you could, uh, I mean, I, I don't have the final version of it, but you could get it from our, our town council, or you could just call up, uh, Green Belt, I'm sure that would give it to you.
Well, he, what he did was, he just referenced in his email that it was similar to the Green Belt one, just for, point of reference for, for you folks, I think, that it was similar.
Okay.
Yeah. Great.
So I think that's it.
Okay.
So we would anticipate closing out these comments, they're minor, again, assuming the assumptions on soil are correct, um, and would anticipate pending zoning board's decision on that night, having a draft decision, we'll have the draft decision either way, and then you can determine whether you want to act.
Okay, great.
Probably up to the applicant, but if we, if we actually close and something weird goes on with zoning, they have to reopen, reopen the hearing, which will take them more[1769.41]
Yeah. Great.
So I think that's it. So we would anticipate closing out these comments. They're minor, again, assuming the assumptions on soil are correct and would anticipate pending zoning board's decision on that night, having a draft decision. We'll have the draft decision either way and then you can determine whether you want to act.
Okay, great.
Probably up to the applicant, but if we, if we actually close and something weird goes on with zoning, they have to reopen, reopen a hearing. It'll take them more time.
Can I just ask one quick question from the architect? So is the inside, is it going to look like that there are like individual, like front doors?
Yes, we're still working on some. Yes, it's going to look like.
My niece who goes to Rutgers getting her masters, like this is like the big, big thing. I'm believing, they can't believe we're going to have one up here. I'm just curious.
Tell them we're, we're cutting edge up here in North Andover.
She's so impressed. She's in her masters down there. They're really cool inside. It looks like a front door. Yeah, anyway, thank you.
Lynn, can, did you say we could close tonight? Is that what you said?
No, but no.
Oh, next week, next month.
Next week, but.
She cautioned it would be risky to close if the zoning board does not grant that variance on the same night.
Yep.
That's all.
We would urge your consideration to close it. The Board of Appeals variance as a condition is perfectly acceptable, but.
From your.
From our perspective, but it, it's a process where I think some of the boards in town use other boards as fertile ground for rethinking things. And the idea that we've completed our due diligence with a board subject to a variance would.
Well, as long as, yeah, I mean, the risk falls to you then is if, if, you know, I mean, typically with CONCOM, we try to overlap them so that, you saw that earlier tonight. It is a little bit different because I think it's, it's much simpler and, you know, the only thing you don't want them to do, obviously, is if they approve it and prove it to some, you know, they want you to move the building 50 feet or something like that. I mean, you know, that's, that's the kind of thing that, but I doubt they would do that in this case. So.
Well, the concern, the concern is if we can, if we, with the, could officers of this board get to the end of the line, I think we sort of de facto limit the Board of Appeals discussions to the four criteria they need to look at.
Soil conditions, open to park.
Right. If this, if this hearing is still open, they start asking lots of questions that are entirely within the purview of your, your board. That's, that's the only question.
Fair enough. Yeah. Okay. Great.
That's it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So what else we got?
So just a couple housekeeping items. The annual lake cleanup day is November 5th. I sent an email out. I just want to let everybody know. It's still on. I believe nine o'clock is the start time, but as soon as I have.
I'm sure I did the email.
At least I sent it. Yes, you did.
We should read a comment.
Oh, come on, just ignore.
Yes, she did. Not going to argue about it. But if anybody can make it, we will take all the help we can get.
You will not be wearing sneakers this time, though.
No, be prepared.
Keep it lit.
David, are you going to be there this year?
I, I, I'm hopeful.
A level spot?
I bet you can have my granddaddy.
There you go. The watershed mailer I have sent to Jennifer Hughes for comment and I spoke with Lisa Eggleston today. She's provided a couple comments. So I think the narrative portion of it is pretty locked up.
The graphics is on May 1.
Lynn, we'll get to the graph.
We might even ask, we just wanted to have pictures.
I, I really think ideally sending it out now at this point will be close to the spring, pre-spring. And we're, we've talked about providing a cover memo and sending it to local landscapers as well, so they have it. I think that's it on that. Peter, did you have any other?
Is the high school, the.
No, not college.
But not the high school Conservation Group?
I believe, I believe they sent people and I believe they will again. Yes. Do you want to provide an update on the lake study group and what was accomplished with the board of selectmen?
Lake Study Group spent the last year working on the lake regulations and the board of selectmen approved the changes and they've been posted on the website. And they do a couple things. They get rid of the dumping of boats in spots along the lake like Pleasant Street that really aren't being used. They're just left there. It establishes two areas where the town will provide boat racks for storage, one by the hatch and one by the Old North Pump Station. And it differentiates between a lake use permit and a lake storage permit.
Wanted to talk about the type of paddleboards and kayak that seated.
Added, no paddleboards on the lake. It's consistent with the previous types of boats that are allowed, boats that don't allow contact with the water. And I think, oh, a public safety, a boating safety from the Commonwealth statute for use of life jackets in certain times of the year.
Now on that, I think, what, November, what was saved about to be removed?
So it, it does also establish a boating season for boat storage and it's April 15th to November 1st. So boats have to be removed.
So when we go out on November 5th, there won't be any boats to dig trash out Monday?
You will see signs posted to the effect.
And if the boats are left there, then they're removed by DPW at owner's expense.
Yeah.
Good.
So I'm sure I got the date right. Yes, November 5th for that date.
Does the town do anything related to ice skating on the lake? It's totally unrelated, I know, but just.
No, they, because it's watershed, you're not allowed, there's no surface contact. Like you can be in a boat, but you can't be on a paddleboard because if you fall, you can touch the water. So that you can't ice skate on the water bottom of the lake.
The, the lake regs, the previous version and the new version, they both make a reference to, you know, being on the ice. For example, no gasoline motors are allowed in boats or with ice augers, no snowmobiles on the ice.
They used to have ice fishing.
There is ice fishing on the lake.
Yeah, so.
You can ice fish, you should be allowed to skate.
No, you could, it doesn't, there's no prohibition against skating.
But we don't, the town doesn't do anything that, to like, say it's safe in this area or some like controls, let's say, around there.
Not that I know of.
Not that I know of.
And, and there is, there is a lot of skating in the hatch, you know, when.
My kids wanted to do it. I was just curious. I, I'm too nervous to take them.
All right. No, do we have minutes?
We do.
I'll make a motion to approve the April 4, 2016 meeting minutes.
Second.
April.
I mean, October.
Good pickup, John.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?